By the authority vested in me, I hereby declare this meeting of the Conshohocken Borough Council duly open and ready to conduct any business that may come before it. This evening before the regularly scheduled meeting, council did hold an executive session on legal matters and property matters. The first item this evening is under presentations. It is the Colonial Area Anti-Racism and Social Equity Alliance, CARSI, presentation. So if Ms. Plant and Ms. Scotty could come up, please, for your presentation, you're welcome. You're welcome.
Thank you. On behalf of CARSI, which you said is the Colonial Area Anti-Racism and Social Equity Alliance, we are honored to present our organization to council tonight. And I'd like to just introduce us. I'm Lori Scott, co-chair of CARSI and co liaison on the policing committee.
And I'm Gail Plant. I'm co-chair for the policing liaison as well as the chair for our Code Blue Shelter.
First, I'll just give you a little bit of background about CARSI. It was formed in June of 2020 after the murder of George Floyd. A group of community members gathered to discuss and take action in our community to hopefully prevent something similar from happening where we live and work. Our relationship began two years ago as a result of meeting with Mayor Yaniv and Chief Metz to discuss issues of policing and getting an understanding of the issues of policing in Conshohocken and policing policies and things like that, just so that our committee could go into our work as informed as possible. So we have actually a three-fold vision. As you can see, we work together to create and support systemic change at a local level in areas such as schools, policing and government structures. We respond directly to issues of discrimination, racism and social inequity in our community. And we raise awareness, model and facilitate courageous conversations and provide resources for community learning and engagement.
All right, so Lori and I are going to tag team on this presentation. So we're tag team. So I'm going to start off by talking a little bit about our Houseless Outreach/Code Blue Shelter. And we, the name changes on a daily basis. So we kind of house, if you hear houses, you may hear unhoused, but all terms synonymously. So this is a new thing and some of you may be aware. We had our launch this past September 23rd. It was wonderfully received by the community. It is going to be held at the Plymouth Meeting Mall inside of Church on the Mall. We will open, we technically officially opened October 1st, but the weather has been very warm. So we haven't needed to call and declare a Code Blue. We will open whenever there's 32 degrees or below, and that's with the wind chill of 32 degrees. So we will declare that, which is different than the county. And it's also different than the other Code Blue shelters within the county. The other shelters are 30 degrees wind chill and the county is 20. And so we will be operating from the perspective, we're not waiting for the county to declare. We will declare and we will actually reach out to the county so that they can gather some of their unhoused neighbors. Because the shelter is not just for the Plymouth, White Marsh, Conshohocken area. It's for the county as broadly. It's operated by all volunteers. We do not have anyone in terms of, we don't have any employees running the shelter at this time. So this is all volunteers. We are continuously soliciting volunteers so that we can spread the wealth. We have four monitoring shifts within the timeframe. So we're open from 8:00 PM to 8:00 AM. The CPW Interfaith Council has graciously donated all food for every declaration. So that's something that was, it's very helpful from a perspective of the food process, funding perspective, but also just from a timing perspective of the volunteers not having to worry about getting the food. And then we have another role that we're asking for volunteers is helping with just cleaning at the end and helping with laundry. We're right now in talks with Mainline Health to do, they would do our laundry. So we're in those conversations right now. So we would just have to get it to them and get it back to the shelter.
Another area of work for CARSI is elections and policy. So a number of our members work with the community to raise voter awareness and engagement with regard to local elections, national elections. And we take the approach of educating the community. So we will push out information on our Facebook page. We'll host sometimes educational awareness opportunities on like a Facebook Live where the community can join in and discuss issues surrounding voting and elections. And then a number of our members also go around the community and canvass and encourage people to vote on primary day and voter registration and things like that.
Next is our youth in schools. For our youth in schools committee, they explore topics and address areas of concern related to youth in schools as the title would indicate. We partner with local schools, the local school district, for the school district itself, as well as other organizations that do programming for our youth as well. It helps to help us to educate the community about our youth in schools. Anywhere from the, and we'll talk a little bit about CARSI cares later, but anywhere from educating on our homeless population. We do have a homeless population in our schools. A lot of people did not know that, but we do have students within the Colonial School District that are not with a home at this time. That number grew over COVID, the COVID period. And so our goal is to try to help and do what we can in that space as well. The committee members, they engage. They attend the school district's committee meetings as well as the board meetings on a regular basis so that the committee can stay abreast of what's happening and then how can CARSI partner and what we can do. And a lot of times they will provide public comment. I personally don't sit on that committee because it is a conflict of interest for me because I'm also a school board member with the district.
The next committee we have is Policing Liaison Committee on which Gail and I had. And we explore topics and address areas of concern related to policing in the colonial area as a whole. So that would be Conshohocken, White Marsh and Plymouth. We've established relationships with Plymouth, White Marsh and Conshohocken Police Departments. We've met with Chief Metz and we've met with Acting Chief Lennon just to kind of make an introduction to ourselves and what we do and to get an understanding on where he stands with regards to policing in the community and community policing. So we serve as a conduit between the community and the police. And we've addressed issues around policing policy and practices, educating the CARSI community on findings and providing recommendations for community action. There are a number of instances where something may happen in the community and then a community member will reach out to either somebody in CARSI directly or reach out to us on our Facebook page to say, hey, did you hear about this? What's going on? And then there'll be a lot of conversation about what did happen, what should happen. And Gail and I have taken the position of building the relationship with the chiefs so that we can go and talk about, hey, you know, are we at liberty to talk about this? What's going on? What do you want the community to know? And so that's been our goal. And we've been pretty successful with engaging with the community and helping the community to get a better understanding of how the police are handling certain situations as they arise. And they may not be able to get all the information that they want immediately, but we're there to connect with the chiefs and, you know, just kind of get a load down and say, okay, we are aware of it and we know that they're working on it. And that seems to, you know, kind of quell any anxiety in the community.
And next is our CARSI cares, which I did allude to a little bit earlier. So this is where we have a space for community members to donate specifically for the needs of Colonial School District families that are experiencing housing or financial insecurities. We started that partnership with the liaison at the school district to help. So she has, they have a need, they let us know and we just blast it out to the community. It could be anywhere from needing a hotel stay or needing a bed. And so we rally around that to try to help get whatever that family needs in an immediate timeframe. In the spirit of equity, we hope to provide all students with the opportunities and resources they need to thrive in our community. So whatever the need is, we're rallying around that so that no one student, especially, you know, our children, not feeling out of place because they don't have what another student may or may not have as well.
Okay, so I'm just going to give you an overview of CARSI's activities and accomplishments in the three years that we've been in existence. I feel we've accomplished a lot and we've engaged with the community, community leaders. And as Gail said, we established the new Code Blue Shelter in conjunction with the Church on the Mall serving the area. We maintain a presence at community and township public events such as, back to, what is it? The Tuesday Police Ones. I can't think of the name of it. National Night Out, that's what it is. That's my fault. So we maintain a presence at events such as National Night Out. We'll have a table and we usually have some sort of games so that the kids can come and answer questions surrounding what they know about the police in their area, community policing, what do they think makes a good community and things like that. And we give them, you know, prizes and things like that. And then we have educational handouts for the adults to take with them. We have hosted several town halls with the CARSI community and Conshohocken, White Marsh and Plymouth Police Departments. Those were successful, gave the community an opportunity to hear from our chiefs and to ask questions and have the chiefs, you know, hear what the concerns of the community are and respond in like form. We consistently host the monthly outreach to the houseless community. It's held at the Norris Town Transportation Center. And we provide season appropriate clothing, food and hygiene products. We've partnered with police departments to resolve several personal and broader issues involving community members. CARSI participated in the Plymouth Police Citizens Academy. I myself participated in that. It was like a 10-week program that takes you through the entire process and all aspects of policing. And so we went through that. Two of our board members have completed that program. And I think that they will be starting their third cohort in the spring.
Oh, and to add to that, we, a couple of our members also participated in the two-hour use of force training with Conshohocken as well.
And we maintain open communication between CARSI and area police departments on things, issues such as diverse hiring. Do you want to speak to that a bit?
Sure. So with the diverse hiring, I'll specifically talk to Plymouth Township. My day job is I actually do consulting and so it's kind of like a twofold here. CARSI is concerned about it and I do training specifically on inclusive hiring. And so we've partnered with them from a CARSI organization. And then I've done some training with the Plymouth Police Department in February. Where Chief Merciati's actually invited other departments in the county to join in as well on inclusive hiring. And that's it. And so this slide is a way to contact us. If you click on that QR code, it's like a one-stop shop to CARSI. It tells you how to donate, how to volunteer and so forth. So if you have questions, our website is up there, which has, you know, it's a basic website and has the information you need and/or a personal question, you can email us at carsi@gmail.com. And so just to close, thank you for the opportunity for having Lori and I present here on behalf of CARSI. Our goal of being here from our perspective is to create a relationship with the council. If there's things that, you know, questions you have, specific things that you may need from a community perspective that you want to partner with us and vice versa. And then sharpen our relationship with the Conshohocken Police Department. We know that there's a transition going on right now. So we want to continue to maintain a relationship with the department.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions?
Oh, sorry.
Oh, were you good? I thought you were done.
I was just going to say, any questions?
Okay. Does anyone have any questions?
I do. I noticed you don't have a community wellness section. One of the, you know, driving forces right now in healthcare is social determinants of health and the idea of getting healthcare organizations getting out and working with the community to look at how to connect the needs of the community to healthcare, routine screening, those types of things. I don't know if you've looked into that, but that's a huge driver right now. Because we, since COVID, we've really identified that people aren't taking care of themselves and don't have the means. And then when you start studying the data, some of it is transportation, some of it is food insecurity. Loneliness is a big one. So it may be another area to explore and to partner with healthcare organizations. You know, we're looking at community health workers, working with people within the communities to teach others in the community how to get to services that they need. So it's another area that probably could be explored.
And are there other organizations that are currently engaged in this work?
So most of your health systems are right now. So Jefferson is a big one, Mainline Health, yep.
Okay, but no smaller entities in, like more local?
So today I sat in a meeting where they've got different types of health hubs and things. We don't have any in our area. And that was one thing that stood out to me is the connector piece isn't there. So while you guys were talking, you know, I was thinking, can we somehow create some connectors and hubs? And just start conversations?
Yeah, absolutely. We'll definitely look at that.
And I do, even though we don't have a leg for Wellness Committee, when we do come across our unhoused population, we do refer them to services offered by the county. So we've taken the opportunity to educate ourselves more on what the county offers, what the process is. It's not perfect, but it is a process. And so we have referred people to those processes. Like for example, a lot of people didn't realize in the, that the school district had a liaison because she plays two roles. She plays a truancy role as well. And so when people kind of see that truancy, it's like, okay, you know, it's trouble. But she also plays the homeless liaison. So those types of things in terms of being able to partner with other entities within either this district or the county.
Another tool you guys could use is, it's called Find Help. It's a, if you Google Find Help, that has, and you put in your zip code, that has a lot of community resources so you don't have to hold that little cheat sheet book of who can I call? If you go out and define Help, punch in a zip code, you can get all kinds of resources.
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions?
I just do want to say, you know, we've had CARSI into the police department a few times. And when we say we've come in for conversations, we're talking hours long, deep, really fruitful conversations which eventually led us to a very successful town hall. Is it last fall?
Yes.
So it's really been a developing partnership over the last couple of years. And I'm very happy to see that they've been able to meet with Acting Chief Lennon as well.
Yes. And we thank Mayor Yaniv for being actively engaged and involved in those conversations as well as kind of pushing us to have this conversation here and to present here as well.
Right. Well, it's been very informative for us also, seeing exactly what you do on all different areas and levels. And I will say I was at the opening for the shelter and it was very impressive. It was very informative on a lot of different levels that I wasn't aware of. So I thank you for that. It was a good day that day. I really did enjoy it. You guys did a great job with it.
Thank you.
So, yeah.
Does anyone else have anything? No? Well, thank you so much for coming in. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You did a great job. It was very informative.
How you make a difference, the grassroots.
Yep. The next item on the agenda is Discover Conshohocken presentation by Lilly Amberg. If Lilly could come up?
I don't think Lilly is here tonight.
Yes. I am the Lilly tonight.
Okay.
Lilly couldn't make it, so you got a Matt Natalie.
Okay, Matt Natalie. Well, thank you for coming in.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And you can start whenever you're ready. We're very curious to hear about you guys and what you've been up to, so.
Absolutely. So like I kind of alluded to, my name is Matt Mashantonio. I own the Artist Loft over on East Fifth Avenue. I'm the store that sells art by local artists and all of the stuff that says Conshohocken on it.
I'm Natalie Bar. I own Sanctuary Blue, just a couple of doors down.
Okay.
I'm going to let Matt do most of this.
So, yes, so I'm here to represent Discover Conshohocken. We are a group of business owners, small business owners in town, who got together because over the years we'd always worked with each other. But Barb Asman, who owns Extra Boutique, texted everybody that she knew and said, we should get together because I know I hear it and I know you hear it is customers will come in the store and say, we live in town, we work in town and we didn't know you were here. And some of us have been open for a year, three years, five years, 10 years, 20 years. So we said, okay, let's do something about that. So she called eight of us together, eight different businesses in March. And we sat down and said, what can we do? So we decided to start planning community-based events in town. Simple, trying to be kind of casual events, if that makes sense. We're not looking to close streets, sidewalks or parking. In fact, we're trying to do the opposite. We want to give people a reason to come into town and eat and shop and walk around and spend time. So we all got together and so far we have had three events this year. We had a what we called Spring into Conshohocken Sidewalk Event where we utilized the space outside of our stores and had different vendors, had our own items outside, had music. And it was a huge success. It was actually one of the best sales days I've ever had in my time in the store. And then we had a lemonade stand event. We invited children to come and sell lemonade outside of our stores. And then we did an ice cream event at the library to benefit the library. We have four more through the rest of the year that we have planned. These are the two of this month. And so I kind of just wanted to come in, introduce ourselves. We had a really great meeting with Stephanie and Borough Management earlier last month. And we had talked about some things and she said, oh, you should bring these up to council and ask them some questions. And there's some things that we have to, you know, address with you. So, yes, before I lose my train of thought, so we are growing really fast. Every meeting we have new people in. So far since we've started, we have reached out to 90 different businesses in and around town. And as you can see, we have our next event on Saturday, maybe Sunday?
Yes, depending on the weather, yes.
And that is based off of our sidewalk event in May and it grew. A lot of other businesses said, hey, what's that? We would love to have people outside our businesses as well. So we are located where it's going to be, flock goes up to sixth, first to sixth. And that might actually grow a little bit because some of the businesses uptown were like, hey, what you doing? And then our second event will be Shop, Eat and Treat Conshohocken where all the local businesses will be giving out candy and it will be an all-age trick or treat. So you are all welcome to come. And we figured that would be a great way, not only to give everybody something to do the Saturday before Halloween, but also get people into our businesses, you know, get to know what we do, what we sell. Like for example, people don't know down at the dress shop at La Bella Moda, they can buy dresses for every occasion and that kind of thing. So we're like, we'll get them in, we can give back at the same time, which is a big thing that's important to us. And so we just kind of wanted to come in, let you know who we were, let you know what that weird new thing is that you keep seeing around town and on social media.
I was curious.
Yes, definitely. And everybody, everybody was. Because what happened was we organically got together and then realized, okay, well, we need a social media presence. We need a website, so we need a name. And then we came up with a name and then we started the social media. And we're going to have a website soon that is going to be a directory of all of the businesses participating, which is almost everybody at this point, so that people can go on in a one-stop shop and see restaurants, retail, specialty, that kind of thing, and a calendar. So we kind of wanted to come in and let you know about the events and see if there's anything we can get you guys involved with. Because we were wondering about if we could get some of our events on the borough calendar and possibly some of the mailers that go out, that kind of thing. In January, we are going to plan all of our events for the next year. So we have everything on the books, dates and rain dates. So that we could, you know, present ahead of time what we have and what we have going on and what we have planned. As I said, there's two more the rest of the year. We have Small Business Saturday, which is always a big one for all of us. And then December 9th is a day that we probably won't be outside, it'll probably be cold, but we'll all be doing something inside of our stores so that people can come into town, go from business to business and do different things. I'm probably going to have ornament making. I know Brunch always has pictures with Santa, Lilly has pictures with Krampus. So a bunch of fun, different things going on. So yes, that's kind of the summary of what we wanted to present to you and see if you all had any questions about who we were and what we were up to.
Well, I think you did a very good job of explaining who you are and what you're up to. And I congratulate you on it. You seem to be doing a great job.
Thank you.
As for the, Steph, is that something that we can, when they have events, shout out on our borough website also? Is that possible to do that?
Yes.
Okay. So that, you know?
It is, I think our conversation is about the prudence of them to come in and request it.
Yes.
If you're all okay with it, then that's helpful for what we realize. The representatives of state and police kind of as their leaders and go directly back and forth with that one that they have planned for the year and then set things up on their calendar and get these happen on social media and also included in our newsletters.
Yes.
And everyone in council?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Anything to back the small businesses?
Absolutely. We love small businesses.
Thank you.
Yeah, I did just have one comment to say, thank you so much for doing this. It's something that I know has been kind of like in the talk of the town for a very long time. But to put together an organization that is even close to this organized, I know it takes hours and hours and lots of effort. And that's on top of you running your small business that you already own. So I really do appreciate you coming together to start creating something like this that is community oriented. I love to see it when the, I know the businesses often get back to the community, but to see it done in this collective way is really, really exciting to see what's ahead for Conshohocken.
Thank you so much.
And it speaks to us loving having the residents involved in things. And this pulls the residents out and onto the main street and enjoying what main street has to offer. So I think that that's great and all the small businesses and people getting to know more about you. So I think it's a wonderful idea.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Really appreciate it. Thank you, yes, the 20th.
The 7th, so.
It might be the 8th.
The 7th might be the 8th. There's a lot of texting going back and forth today.
Yes.
Definitely.
Definitely on that weather. Does anyone else have any questions? Any don't know? Okay, well, thank you so much for coming in. And we wish you the best of luck and we'll be more than happy to support you.
Thank you.
We're excited for you guys. We really are.
Thank you.
Thank you. See ya.
The next item on the agenda. The next item on the agenda is the presentation of the Shuttle RFP results. Maureen Farrell from GVF. Good evening, Maureen.
Good evening. Thank you for having me.
Thank you for coming in this evening.
All right. Getting ready to say good morning, but no way. We are, we are in the evening. So my name is Maureen Farrell. I'm the Deputy Executive Director for GVF. And just a little bit of background about GVF, we were here at this point a couple months ago, but just to refresh her, because you guys have a lot that comes here in in front of you. So we are a nonprofit. We're over thirty years old, basically looking at mobility options for all. And we're doing that, working with communities. We work with large organizations such as Vanguard, developers, Brandywine. Essentially, how do people have more choices so that they don't have to drive alone everywhere? The Borough of Concha Hocken has been a longtime member of GVF, goes before Steph's time, but over two decades. And so essentially what GVF does, every industry loves their term, their acronyms, but it's TDM, so Transportation Demand Management, and that is really looking at how we're managing our streets, our transportation network. So anything that, not naive to think that everyone's gonna jump out of their single occupancy vehicles, but essentially we're looking at educating residents, employees of different oper- options for them. So that could be riding your bike, taking a shuttle, carpooling, taking public transit. And why we're here today is to talk about those shuttle options. So GVF as an administrator, we've have over three decades of mobility planning, essentially looking at not just with shuttle service, but looking at how people are getting to and from their destination and looking at what other type of alternatives are available for them. This is just a snapshot of some of our clients that we've worked with on the private sector and on the public sector. And why we're here today is to talk about, the survey results did prove that residents are interested in a shuttle. Just as a refresher, thought I would just bring everyone back up to speed. We did have over two hundred responses. We were pretty happy with that, considering we do a lot of surveys for communities and large corporations. We worked with the Borough to get that information on their social media. We helped to put it in our weekly email. You'll see that the range we had, over fifty-five and over, were representing over thirty percent, and a large population was Borough residents, which is great to see. And the reason we went out to RFP is because sixty percent did want a shuttle, and this was a list of all the potential stops, which was included in the RFP. The SEPTA train station, maybe not to be a surprise, but that was the most popular. So in the month of July, we put out an RFP. We worked with a solicitor with some great reviews, and those RFPs proposals were due August fourteenth, and we received four of them. King Limo, Craft Coaches, LAZ Parking, and Suburban Transit Network. LAZ Parking was quickly eliminated because the price was extremely, extremely high. The shuttle stops were provided from the Borough Manager, so those were included, and looking at really, how can we get residents to not be driving downtown and eliminate? And as the Borough Manager, Steph, schools are really looking at the environment, providing better quality of life, get people walking, or leave their cars at home and utilizing this potential shuttle. So our purpose of being here today is because with those RFPs, again, eliminated the one, so really looked at the three, and did an analysis and a comparative analysis of all three vendors. GVF works with all three. They provide the physical vehicle, very reputable organizations that we work with. These are the recommendations before I get into who we would be recommending to provide that service for the vehicles. The recommendation was a shuttle schedule that, working with the Borough Manager, that we put in and included in the RFP. We're recommending that it be a fourteen-passenger vehicle, really looking at the fluidity of of people really being able to hop on and off. We don't think it needs to be this big twenty-passenger vehicle going up and down Fayette Street. We are recommending that the vehicle be wrapped, a half-wrapped, to really give visibility to the shuttle versus it being a plain white vehicle. That could be a wrapped design that we work on separately with the Borough. It also helps to identify it for residents. And we are recommending, and I'll touch on it briefly, but the tracking system, and an opportunity for residents to be able to, I think it's my next slide, one more after, but an opportunity for residents to be able to download that information, an app, to be able to physically see where the vehicle is. And so our recommendations for the shuttle provider that would be providing the the physical vehicle is Transit, Transnet, Suburban Transit Network. We've been working with Transnet for, I'd say, it's it's over twenty years, it's probably close to twenty-five plus. They also have a previous history with the Borough. They they really were in compliant, all three were, but looking at their proposal, it was the most concise, it was the most efficient. They are also the lowest annual cost. I know that's always being mindful. They're a nonprofit as well. They were able to provide propane vehicles. They, for no additional charge, are going to put, if approved, two cameras inside the vehicle, and that's really meant to be safety aspects for the passengers and for the drivers as well. Wi-Fi, so there there's a list of several bullets, as you can see. I started to allude to this earlier, but just wanting to touch on this as well. They also had the most cost-effective tracking software. So the software itself is called Busware, and that is something that can be downloaded by residents in their iPhone or Android, and it's gonna provide real-time data for the administrator and for the end user as well. And then GVF, as the administrator, we've been working already with the Borough on this process, this over almost a year process. And so we analyzed and now moving forward, if approved, it would be generating the contracts for all the parties, it would be helping to promote the shuttle, working on graphics, marketing, talking to businesses, talking as, yep, individuals, the small business owners, so that they, we can really have an inclusive opportunity to be able to promote this, this opportunity for residents. We're also gonna be looking at the ridership because it is a new shuttle. We want to ensure that it's being utilized, so we can then, maybe we're adjusting the hours. Any types of detours, or if SEPTA changes their SEPTA schedules, which sometimes happens with their train schedules, we'll be able to adjust that if needed with the the timing of the schedule. This is just a little bit more detail. I don't have to read every bullet, but this essentially, marketing is a broad topic, but we'd be working directly with the Borough on that. The total annual cost is a little over two hundred and thirty-five thousand. This would be including a service from Wednesday to Saturday, eleven AM to eleven PM. Sunday, nine AM to three PM. It would be one vehicle. It would be a fourteen-passenger, it would be equipped with two bike racks. It would, as I mentioned, the two cameras inside. It's ADA compliant, it has Wi-Fi, it would have the software for tracking. There are just, it would be two. The one-time fee is the half-wrapped. If it's chosen, that that would be the the one-time cost, and then also to install the tracking software. This is a, I would say, a broad, general timeline today here to present to Borough Council, and then if approved, GVF would then start with drafting the contracts for all the necessary parties, obviously for Steph's signature, and then really utilizing November to finalize that, overseeing the execution. We would go out to be able to do routes of the the system, potential of if we wanted to wrap the vehicle, and then, of course, would be really a kickoff meeting of of the necessary parties. It is being proposed that the shuttle in the RFP would be starting in January, so some finalized and additional details would definitely be discussed along the way. But I think that was, yeah, that was my last slide. I know it was meant to be a little high level in in some of the earlier content, but I'm happy to flip back to any of the slides or if you had any additional questions.
What is the part of the route, you stopped at every apartment building? Because they say right next to the corner, this has a center stop, is the whole?
So that's gonna be with, I don't wanna say further analysis, so once a vendor is selected, and what we would hope it would be Transnet, is that then we would be able to go out and actually see, is there a better way to streamline it? So the initial stops that were proposed that we were given, it was like, well, let's just put it in there so that the vendor, the vehicle providers know a glimpse of it, but that could easily be if they're right on top of each other. Definitely could be looked at.
Anyone else in council have a question?
Steph, from a policy standpoint, right? So we come up with an idea of a route because it's our best guess. If we get recommendations for other areas in the Borough that would want it, will we set up policy on how to request new stops or different stops? And then is there a cost to work with the company to change that?
So from an administrative perspective, the reason why Transnet was the attractive vendor, for all the reasons that Maureen listed, but also for that very reason, because we know it's gonna be fluid and it's gonna have to change. Transnet was the only entity that provided the parameters of what a realistic business partnership is gonna look like, so exactly that. This is a hypothetical, and once it gets turned into real world, there's gonna be tangible changes that need to happen. So those costs to, you know, change hours of operation or the shuttle route or the hours of service, there was notice requirements that were listed in their proposal, there was costs that were associated with that proposal, where with the other vendors, it was an unknown. So, yes, there will be policy to make changes, knowing full well on the other end, just from a response from an RFP, the vendor that we're recommending already had the foresight to provide that in their response, that they clearly have done this to the extent that they know there's gonna have to be some back and forth, and I'm going into it knowing what their expectations are.
Thank you.
Yep.
I'll just add to that if I may. We currently work, as I mentioned, we've been working with Transnet over twenty years, and we had that relationship that it's, they say, "Well, let let me have my driver go out on the route and see, is it gonna add additional time?" And most often in seeing especially the the density that the Borough has, it probably won't add that much time, and it's like Steph said, that it's already been managed in that cost, so. But it's very much a working relationship, which is, which has been great, so.
I just, knowing the relationships that we've had in the past in terms of public-private partnerships, for me, there was a separate section of the RFP that was separated out, which highlighted any variations or proposed variations or any defined variations from what we had requested, kind of providing their expertise and also acknowledging the fact that it's going to have to alter slightly during the course of the year.
Yeah, because I I have had feedback lately from residents with the stops and if there could be different spots on the route, and I I I did say that I didn't know that it was really a work in progress.
Yeah, I think at some point, there's, there's gonna have to be a defined route. It's not gonna be, we can accommodate everybody's requests, we're not gonna be able to stop in front of people's homes. That's not the intent of this. We are supposed to be a walkable Borough. This is to provide an alternative means of transportation to parking or to utilizing one car to drive around town. It's to benefit the small businesses, the large corporations, the brand-new train station, access to the grocery store for maybe a portion of the population that, you know, needs assistance to get to the grocery store, so it's.
That's where it comes in with the access to people that need to get to somewhere like a grocery store or a restaurant that can't get to those specific areas because they would have to drive to that. But it's something we can discuss later. That's why I'm asking if there's still going to be a little.
I think that the RFP results were submitted, there's an acknowledgement that there's going to potentially need to be changes to the stops. But this is not a, we have a Transnet.
Yes.
Service that we already utilize.
Yes.
This is in conjunction to that.
But that isn't used to transport people to, say, to a restaurant. It's used to transport people to a doctor's or?
It depends, I mean, right now, if they want to utilize it for that, they could.
They can?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so they're not aware of that then?
Yeah.
That part of the population?
Yep.
Okay, that's the questions I had. Somebody's cracking.
Yeah, and I have an area that is the whole perimeter of where we could go.
Right now, the stops are basically the perimeter and down the center of town.
So where, how far up Fayette Street?
We go all the way up through the Borough, and we actually stop at the Giant, so that there's access to a food store. So you come, you do come slightly out of the boundaries of the Borough, simply because we wanna, you know, be inclusive of our zip code somewhat, and we were trying to accommodate the needs from what we've heard in terms of feedback.
So do we go outside the boundaries anywhere else?
Slightly, yes. You go slightly out of the boundaries throughout the entirety of the shuttle.
So we'll be going slightly into the White Marsh section of Concha Hocken and the Plymouth section of Concha Hocken?
That is correct, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I can respect that, too, if if somebody doesn't have access or would have to drive to that shuttle stop. So I do think we'll have to be mindful, just to echo that comment that Steph made, is because if you start to say, "Oh, we'll pick you up there, we'll pick you up there," it does start to balloon, and then it's not the type of service that.
Yes, and I I absolutely know that. That's not something we can include in that. That was not my intention in the question.
It might just be a matter of sending out additional information on what is available.
Right.
And that we can do as well.
And we can help with that as well, if we're up that.
Right. Okay, does anyone else have any questions? No? Okay, well, thank you. Thank you so much. It was a great presentation. I appreciate your work.
And Transnet is in the room in case we had any questions, but I think it looks like I covered it. So thank you all for your time, and have a great rest of your meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is under Land Use Matters, Public Hearings, and Ordinances. I will ask the public if there are any, if there is any public comment on any of the next items that we will be addressing, because this would be the time for public comment on those items, and that would include one in the Manager Matters section also. So there is no one for a public comment, okay. So the first item is Consider Adopting Ordinance O-1-2023, accepting the dedication and opening of Oak Street. And I will turn that over to Mr. Peters.
Thank you, President Leonard. As you know, in connection with opening the Oak Street crossing over the SEPTA tracks, you need to adopt an ordinance, ordaining it a street of the Borough. You have advertised the ordinance as required. We've provided notice to the neighboring underlying property owner, which is, in this case, SEPTA in all regards. SEPTA was notified that it would be considered this evening, but because we've been working in conjunction with them to get the crossing opened, I'm not surprised that there's there's no one here to object to it. There is an opportunity for a public hearing. No public hearing has been requested, so this evening it is ready for your vote. It would be to, again, open the Oak Street crossing. The actual tax map parcels are zero five dash zero zero dash zero 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 three two dash zero one dash seven, zero five dash zero zero dash zero 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 three two dash zero zero dash eight. The actual tax map parcels are 05-00-00032-01-7, 05-00-00032-00-8, and 05-00-00040-00-9. And attached to the ordinance that was advertised is a map and legal description. The map certainly makes it a lot easier to understand what we're talking about, and again, it's the unopened portions of the railroad tracks and roadway necessary to effectuate that opening. And again, it is ready for your vote this evening, and then I think there'll be quick movement to open it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Peters. So, this evening, if council is so inclined, the motion is to adopt ordinance 01-2023, Accepting the Dedication and Opening of Oak Street.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. So the next item on the agenda is Consider Adopting Ordinance 02-2023, Amending the Borough's Parking Ordinance. And again, we will turn this over to Mr. Peters.
Thank you, President Leonard. We've discussed this a few times, for the public's benefit, as briefly as I can make it. The ordinance would allow the fire marshal to enforce fire lanes. It creates one new one-way street on Walnut Street from East Elm to East Hector Street in the northerly direction. It makes two new stop intersections at Howell Street, with the intersection of 12th Avenue in both directions. On West First Avenue, with the intersection with Forest Street, again, in both directions. It creates new no-parking areas on East Elm Street in the 500 block, where municipal vehicles-only signs are posted. That's on the south side, between Apple Street and Jones Street. On Oak Street, on the west side, from the intersection with Stoddard Avenue, north to no parking signage. On East Sixth Avenue, on the south side, from the intersection with Harry Street, east to no parking signage. It creates new and/or amended special parking zones on Fayette Street, on the east side, between Fourth and Fifth Avenue, 20-minute parking only. On West Fourth Avenue, on the south side, between Fayette Street and Forest Street, 15-minute-to-go orders, only parking, there's two parking spaces to be identified with signage. West Fourth Avenue, on the north side, the intersection of West Fourth Avenue and Fayette Street, three spaces marked police parking, police department-only parking, and that's for police department-only parking, obviously. It amends the residential permit parking restrictions to address the expiration of those permits and how that works. It clarifies on- and off-street metered parking, what the rates of that metered parking is, and it makes several amendments to allow for the use of the Park Mobile app. It creates new tollway zones on East Elm Street, on both sides, between the 500 and 600 blocks, where municipal vehicles only and tollway signs will be posted. On East Sixth Avenue, on the south side, from the intersection with Harry Street, east to no parking signage. And on West First Avenue, on the north side, from the intersection of West Fourth Avenue and Fayette Street, three spaces marked police department-only parking. And then, at your last meeting, we noted that we were adding in, because it is within the same subject matter, clarifying the restrictions on portable storage units. Those will be permitted for permits issued in periods of five business days, for a maximum of 15 business days. The only exception to that is if there's been a building permit issued, and there's a longer period for that. Those are the amendments. Again, we've discussed this a few times, but for the public's benefit, that's a brief summary of what's being proposed. And it has been advertised and is ready for a vote.
Thank you, Mr. Peters. So the motion before council this evening is to adopt ordinance 02-2023, Amending the Borough's Parking Ordinance.
I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is Consider Approving Resolution 2023-21, Establishing Residential Permit Parking on East Eighth Avenue Between Fayette Street and Harry Street. And again, we will refer to Mr. Peters.
Thank you, President Leonard. The resolution establishes residential permit parking on East Eighth Avenue between Fayette Street and Harry Street. It's as simple as that, it's on the north side.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Peters.
You're welcome.
I'm glad you got one simple explanation in there this evening. So the motion this evening is to approve Resolution 2023-21, Establishing Residential Permit Parking on East Eighth Avenue Between Fayette Street and Harry Street.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is under Council Business. The first item is to conduct an interview for vacancy on the Friends of Conshohocken Parks, and the applicant is Anita, Anika Petraskey, if you're here this evening, if you could come up, Anika. Good evening.
Hi.
Hi, thank you for your interest in Friends of Conshohocken Parks. So, what is, why would you like to be on the Friends of Conshohocken Parks? That's the basic question.
I've lived in Conshohocken since about 2009. I know Yaniv and Sarah through Conshohocken Running Club, as well as Marissa Buck, who's here as well, and just want to help out with projects and just promote the community.
Well, thank you. Anyone else in council have a question?
Is there any particular issue or thing about the parks that has caused you to want to join this committee?
Not an issue, really, just enjoying the parks as a resident, and just wanting to help out with anything new and upcoming.
So what is your understanding of what that would involve being on that committee for the parks?
I think, you know, fundraising and things like that, just different events. My background's in meetings and event planning, so I think I could be helpful with things like that, so.
Thank you.
Have you attended some of the events at the parks, like the Halloween parades coming up? Have you done any of that sort of thing?
I don't know if I've been to the...
Maybe not that specifically, but any events at any of the parks?
You know, like concerts, or movies, or, not yet?
Not that I can...
It's okay.
The Springbrier Nights are a big hit at Marywood, and at the Bee Field, too.
Yeah, I live off East Ninth, so I go to Marywood Park almost every day, walking around at the park with my dog, so, familiar with there.
Positive, I saw you at the Conchi Five Camp.
Oh, yes, the Conchi Five Camp, so.
I think we put you on the spot on that question, you couldn't quite think on it, and that's okay. Does anyone else have a question?
No.
No? Well, thank you for coming in this evening, thank you for your interest, it's very much appreciated from all of us, thank you.
Can you verify, how do you say your first name?
Annika.
Annika, well, as I, just tell me, I said it wrong.
I do, I was just checking.
Okay, thank you.
I didn't mind you calling her Anita.
I didn't, I was calling her Anika. But whatever, now I know it's Annika, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So the next item on the agenda is Conducting Interviews for Reappointment for the Borough Boards and Commissions, and the first person is for Adrian, I'm going to give you that name to pronounce.
Oh, uh...
Do you have it?
No.
I'm kidding. Ashley Gatos, if you could come up, please, thank you.
You put me on the spot.
It wasn't a hard one.
Yeah, I know.
It was not, but I had to tease him a little bit. So, thank you for coming in, this is your second time for this, and I truly appreciate you doing this. I know that it's not a board committee that gets a lot of use, but it is a very important one for the borough, and I personally appreciate that, you do that for us.
I think we're doing it right if it doesn't get a lot of use, right?
That is exactly right, but having you in that position, if needed, is truly important to all of us, so, I do appreciate that. So I'm not going to ask you why you're doing it, because I know why you're doing, but does council have any questions? No?
Can you...
No, I think I was, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I think I was going to just ask, are you discouraged that you don't have a whole lot of traction, but I think you answered it by saying it...
No, I mean, I, you know, I, last year when I came to be a part of the committee, I want to give back to my community, I think that's great. This is an area that I do day-to-day, so it's a natural alignment, but if I never have to actually do anything, then, you know, that's just another reason why I'm proud to be a part of this community.
Exactly, yes. But having you there is wonderful for us, so.
Sorry, Adrian.
Go ahead, Adrian.
No, that was...
Answered?
Yeah.
Everybody's answered? Okay. Well, I think no one has any more questions, so thank you for taking the time to come in this evening to reapply.
Thank you.
So, we appreciate it. Next person to be interviewed is Carol Smith for reappointment to the Sewer Authority Board. Good evening, Carol.
Good evening, everybody.
Hello.
How are you?
I am fine, thank you.
That's good.
Thank you for your time this evening. Obviously, you know why I'm here, I'd like to be reappointed to the Sewer Authority Board, but I'd like to tell you a little bit about myself, because I don't think you all really know much about me. I've lived in Conshohocken now 35 years, just retired this year, and I originally came to Conshohocken from Allentown. I was working at Sanofi, I was doing, I was the lead in the vaccine research, and I managed QC lab of all their vaccine release products. But a friend from college told me about this new opportunity at SmithKline, which then went to SmithKline Beachum, and then went to GSK. And so, I looked into that job. I had to stay within an hour of Allentown, because I had obligations with my parents. So it was a good opportunity for me. So I moved here in 1989. I lived above the Storeys for two years. But the reason I came here was for a number of reasons. It was a good job opportunity, biotech was first starting, and I don't think you guys know any of this, but I worked at GSK for 15 years, and while I was there, I helped develop five different monoclonal antibodies. Two of those are in commercial productions. I did tech transfers from their UK facility to our production plant. I actually did all the tech transfers from our pilot plant to Building 40, which is that huge 5,000-liter, now they have two 10,000-liter reactors. And the reason I say that was because I had considered where I wanted to live when I wanted to move down here. I was a big biker at the time, I used to bike over 100 miles a week, I used the trails all the time, very happy about the trails now that you can do a 60-mile ride. Back then, they were pretty empty, now they're full of mammals, as we call them, middle-aged men in lycra, but, you know, we deal with that.
Love it.
But I take my remit seriously, I always took my jobs very seriously, but I also take a remit as a citizen and a community member very seriously, and that's probably because of my high school teachers. And that's probably the real reason I'm here, is because of Mr. Fisher and Mr. Harris, who taught me in high school about civic responsibility, but civic obligation, and how it works both ways. So, I've always tried to give back to the community while I was at GSK. I was a visiting scientist for 15 years I was there, and would go down to the school districts, work with the teachers for whatever they would want demonstrated for their classes. And one of the most interesting things that I wanted to mention to you tonight, because I believe the borough manager talked about public-private enterprises, but I worked with the Wissahickin Restoration Volunteers, and that was just when they were getting started. I volunteered for them for about four years, and it was interesting, they just had their 25th anniversary, and I was asked to speak at that, because I was one of the original volunteers of that organization. And what was interesting is, we worked pretty seamlessly with the Philadelphia Parks Department. Joe DeLuGash, that's who they wanted me to talk about, he was the curmudgeon that ran that organization. But if you don't travel to the Wissahickin, it's another reason, I love Pennsylvania and I love this area, it's a jewel, not only of this area, but of our country. And I don't know if you know this, it's the largest contiguous park in the United States, but like many assets, all our natural assets, all our trees and everything, they have to be maintained. So, during my tenure there, I was head of their invasive species removal, we spent many hours pulling out mile-a-minute vine. But what we did do is write a lot of grants, and we got grants and we gave them to the Philadelphia Parks Department, and they did the integrated pest management, which was for removal of jewel, Japanese knotweed, and multiflora rose, you have to use integrated pest management for those. But we also planted, in the few years that I volunteered there, we planted over 4,000 trees in the Wissahickin. But it takes commitment, and it takes partnership, takes communication, takes integrity, and it takes transparency to do that. But WRV is still around, still planting trees, and still trying to take care of the Wissahickin. And the reason I mention that, because I think that's a good partnership that can be used in many cases, and we've tried to use those sorts of partnerships as well in the Sewer Authority. But another reason I'm here is because eventually in 2008, I was laid off from a job called Tengion, which is an interesting story, it's in Harvard Business Review, I was their first principal scientist at their East Norton location. And again, another reason for me loving this area is the great science that we have here. We were actually doing neonatal bladder replacements, we were getting biopsies from patients, separating the cells, and I was employee 42 of that startup, so for three years, I didn't really do much volunteering, I pretty much worked pretty tirelessly. And it was interesting technology, it didn't get off the ground, and unfortunately, we got laid off. And that's about the time I went to see Jason, and I said to Jason, I said, you know, I've done a lot of volunteering, I actually used to volunteer, there used to be a family shelter in Norristown, I don't know if you guys know that, we've had a homeless problem for decades. And again, because of my history teachers and how they taught me to get involved, and the reason, we didn't just discuss those things, we actually did get involved with high school. I was 14, and I protested against Caesar Shaver and the great, for the grape union workers. So I've been trying to be involved in my community since I've been a teenager. I was also in ninth grade and campaigned for McGovern, that's probably why he lost, but, you know, still trying to do my duty. But I went up to Jason after I got laid off, and I said, I used to do this volunteering, and I do that. At that time, we had a shade tree commission, which I helped start with Bern and Liz, I don't know if any of you remember that. We did that for a couple of years, and we were really successful. Again, it takes commitment and, you know, cooperation to do that, but I believe in our first year, we planted 112 trees here in Conchi, we had tree clinics all over, we were written up in the paper, and I know Jason was a big supporter of us back then. But about the Sewer Authority, I went to him and I said, Jason, you know, I've done this stuff, but I want to do something else for my community, you know, I've done this other volunteer work, and he mentioned the Sewer Authority. He said with my work record, the fact that I am involved with processes and technology transfers, and I know those things very well, actually, all the water tests that are done at the Sewer Authority, I did that at my first QC job, and I had to wear a hard hat and steel tips, and travel into the bowels of the plant to get the water samples that then I tested, the same test that we have to do down for the Sewer Authority. So, I researched it, and I said, yeah, I think that would be a good fit, because I do take my commitments seriously, and I take my responsibilities and obligations, works both ways, to the community, and I'm proud of my record for my service on the Sewer Authority. When I first came there, I didn't know much about it, I felt capable of handling it, but it was a mess. And for the next two terms, we righted that ship, and I think I'm rightly proud to say that we have one of the best waste management facilities in the state, and I know that from being at the recent PMAA meeting, when we discussed with other people around the state what's happening. And in that time there, we became incredibly financially prudent, which we still are to this day, we watch every penny, we righted that ship, it took us two years, but throughout the last 10 years, we've done so much. Not only financially, we put in placeholders and double checks, we have completed our interceptor project with a number of multimillion-dollar grants from this, our INI is probably the best of any sewer authority in the state, we completed our odor control project, I was a big part of that, because of my background in chemistry, I was the first one to recommend we start putting meters around the area. So we collected the data, I worked with the stat department at GSK for over a year, and I do know the importance of good data, correct data, and the use of data, I had to do it for all my CMC portions for FDA proposals. So, we collected all that data, we collected every complaint that was there, and we rectified it. And we got Webster in from Kentucky, and we did the odor control, we did it with not having to do a rate increase, and we've had no complaints for years now, since that's been completed. We did the chlorine gas upgrade this year, that was a big safety issue. We had... We had been using chlorine gas and we changed to a chemical means, much safer. We've done great personnel development with our department. You have a board that's been there, that's been paying attention. We know the issues that are coming up. We pay attention. I do do my homework. I read a lot about this stuff. I've taken a number of courses. And I think we'd have a good handle on what we need in terms of our personnel. We know this is coming up. We've talked about this for years. It's an industry issue about getting personnel, but we've been in talks with the PMMA to get an internship program to try to make sure we have the personnel that's going to be there. We're doing, we've always had a 10- to 20-year plan. We try to plan all our expenses that way. Usually, it used to be a 20-year plan, but from management books that I've been reading and, and other industry sources, it's sometimes better just to use a 10-year plan. So that's what we do. We're creating electrical upgrades in our systems in West Conshohocken that were very overlooked. And we've been mediating the systems in West Conshohocken as needed. We've had several unexpected costs this year in some events, but we've handled those well. In the future that's coming up, you know, we have, we've known that stormwater was coming for years. I myself have taken a number of courses from Penn State on this. I've met with the watershed people. So we've been planning that for years and we're ready for it. We have things in place. Our water, our stormwater fees are reasonable. They are a little bit higher than the average in Pennsylvania, but you have to understand that Conshohocken is, you know, a paved funnel. It's not easy to mediate stormwater here because of the configuration of the town and the lack of open space. We're aware of that. But it's just something to keep considering. And when people ask you about your stormwater fees, you're, something that you can tell them, we're not farmland. And that is what goes into your stormwater fees. We had a lot of good presentations on that at the PMAA. We also participate in Fund Fest and Green Fest and we try to be a part of the community as much as possible. And I have to say that our COVID response was probably the first COVID response of anyone. We put posters out on the community garden fence with community advice. When this first started happening, I used to do vaccine development. I understand vaccines. We studied pandemics in graduate school. And we were first to hit the ground with taking care of the employees at the sewer, making sure that there were precautions already put in place immediately, probably before anybody else did. We required masking and separation and different lunch meetings. And we also posted something in our newsletter, probably one of the first people to put something out there. So I'm proud of what we did with regard to that. So, you know, I'm here because of my history teachers told me to get involved. I'm here because Jason said this was a good idea. But, you know, there's lots of things that I try to be involved in, but I do take my remit seriously. I take civic involvement seriously. And I would like to continue to see that the Sewer Authority remains public and publicly run and, and is run as well as it has been. I think one of the best things that the community sewer has done is the community garden. 13 years it's been in existence. We had a very collegial relationship with the garden people. I'm not on the garden board. But I have to say, it's probably the most, one of the most diverse activities in the borough. This year, we just had raised beds for our disabled people. And Paul and I, I remember when we first started that out, we were amazed that we found a space with four, four sides open to the sunlight. Sunlight's the most important thing you need for plants to grow. And lots of, lots of man-hours of people going down there on their own time, doing that, clearing that land, doing those plots. And we've done it for 13 years. And hats off to the people who are actually on the board of the garden because they do a fantastic job. And I'm happy that the sewer was actually able to provide that, so. But there are a lot of other organizations around here well, as well. I'm a member of CARSA. I didn't start it, but I'm a member of it because organizations need boots on the ground and they do a great job. I've joined 30% Monco. They talk about the homeless shelter. There used to be a family shelter in Norristown. I volunteered at it from 1996 to 98. And it was, you take that message home with you when you see that your own privilege is, is something that, you know, you don't always recognize. So I'm happy that you guys are doing that for our community. It's an issue that, you know, you guys are the first ones that any of these issues come to. Now, I try to, I took my remit of being a good part of the sewer, of the sewer board seriously and I think I've done a good job. We have plans to keep it maintained, running. You should be very proud of the system that you have. That was first, the sewer plant was initially built in the 1980s from a federal grant as a public waterway. So I would like to be reappointed. I'm proud of the work I've done. I worked very hard at it. But I also work very, there's lots of organizations that try to fill gaps. There's the Rotary, there's CARSA, there's the CNC, and so many others. And, you know, that's what makes a community, at least, that's what my history teachers taught me. So, thank you.
Carol, thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
The next item on the agenda is under manager matters. I will turn that over to Ms. Checo.
Thank you, President Leonard. On your agenda this evening is an RFP, a draft RFP for Labor Attorney Services. As we do on a regular basis, we evaluate our current professional services. If we feel like we haven't in a while done an evaluation and a full assessment, we'll put an RFP out just to generate interest, to see what other entities are out there for those same. So this year, we're going to send out an RFP for Labor Council specifically with a specific emphasis on contract negotiations, litigation, conduct trials, appeals, proceedings, et cetera. So you have a draft. There will be a few slight changes to the draft, such as timelines and some verbiage. But this is not a vote item for this evening. It's on for any discussion or any questions and then it'll be back on your agenda in two weeks. And then, of course, it'll be, go through an advertising cycle, an administrative review, results tabulated, and then back in front of you for consideration.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions on that? No? Okay.
Great. If you have any questions, concerns, or input you'd like me to include prior to the voting meeting in October, just let me know. I'll incorporate it.
Thank you, Stan.
The next item is the 2022 Hazard Mitigation Plan. The Montgomery County has completed the 2022 update to the Hazard Mitigation Plan. It has also been approved by both Pima and FEMA. In order for us to be eligible for hazard mitigation grants and funding programs, which we have taken advantage of, we need to adopt this specific resolution, which, which accepts the county's updated Hazard Mitigation Plan. So if you're inclined this evening, is a resolution to adopt the county's plan. And an example is the assistance that we received for Storm Ida, both at the federal and county level.
Thank you, Stephanie. So if council is inclined this evening, the motion is to approve Resolution 2023-22, adopting Montgomery County 2022 Hazard Mitigation Plan.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Ms. Stettler has been in front of you numerous times this year, presenting on the CDPG program and just the benefits it provides to the community, either through the housing program or through what we've used for curb ramps and other projects. We are looking to submit an application for the 2023 funds. That would equate to roughly $153,141. We did have community meetings, asking for any input on the program or uses of the money itself. This evening, we are asking for authorization to submit that application now that we've completed all those required steps. So if inclined, we would be looking for a motion.
Thank you, Stephanie. So the motion is to approve Resolution 2023-23, authorizing the submission of the 2023 CDPG application.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Along with that resolution, in order to submit, we are required to update our three-year community development plan. The plan basically assesses the needs of the community and projects activities over the next three years as it pertains to housing, community facilities, public services, and economic development. So in order to submit the application, we also need to submit with them the approved three-year community development plan.
Thank you, Stephanie. So if council is inclined, the motion is to approve the CDPG three-year community development plan.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
The last item under manager matters is the Aubrey Collins Park retaining wall replacement project. That project is now complete. The contractors have completed the final work and punch list. Our engineer has reviewed the list of work that was required through the contract. And we also have received the acknowledgement of payment and release of liens. The amount to close out the contract is $11,850. And we are recommending the payment certification be approved.
Thank you, Stephanie. So the motion this evening is to approve payment certificate number two, final for the Aubrey Collins Park retaining wall replacement project in the amount of $11,850.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Checo. The next item on the agenda is under legal matters, which I will again turn over to Mr. Peters.
Thank you, President Leonard. The first item is a review of an agreement with Tri-State Financial Group for Business Privilege Tax, Mercantile Tax, and Local Services Tax Collection Services. This agreement, as drafted, more or less just mirrors the agreement that you already have with Tri-State. They already do your collection of Act 511 taxes, like the business privilege tax. This agreement would be for a three-year term, ending December 2026. We have proposed increasing the bond amounts, just given the reality of the tax amounts coming into the borough, from $500,000 to a $1 million bond. The percentages that the, that Tri-State would get in connection with their collection remain the same. So it's 2% for taxes collected and then 5% of delinquent taxes collected. And otherwise, the, the terms of the agreement remain the same as from your current agreement. It is not up for a vote this evening, it's just for your consideration. So if you have any questions or proposed amendments, please let me know. I will note that Tri-State has found this proposed agreement, its draft, acceptable. But the borough has not yet signed it yet because you all have to approve it. So if you have any questions or thoughts, please let me know.
Mike, did they balk at all at the $1 million bond?
No.
Anyone else have any questions? You can move on to the next.
Very good. The next item is consider approving an amendment to the site security agreement for the 51 Washington Street project. You normally don't, don't see these, frankly. We handle them administratively, but this one's a little unique. As you'll recall, this, this project was one of the projects that was subject to a settlement agreement. So we actually brought before you the documents when we initially approved them, so to make sure you were still in the loop and approving everything that occurs, we're bringing this request to you. The request is to replace the existing security, which is in the form of a letter of credit, to a cash collateral. Cash is universally the best form of collateral. The money would be put into a bank account that's held by the borough and, and all regards would be better than a letter of credit. So administration and, and my office have no problem recommending the change to a cash collateral. It does involve an amendment to the site security agreement, just to reflect the fact that it's a different form of security. This item, just to move it ahead because it is more administrative than not, we would like a vote this evening and it would be to approve the change to a cash collateral, subject to final review of Steph and I for an amendment to the site security agreement.
Before I make the motion, does anyone have any questions for Mr. Peters on that? No? Okay. So in front of council is the motion to authorize the Borough Manager and Borough Solicitor to amend the site security agreement for 51 Washington Street project and execute upon completion.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
And the last item is to discuss a one-time use license agreement for use of the Borough helipad. In reality, you are receiving requests for one-time use of the helipad. We don't have any document to allow for that and to protect the borough. So we've now prepared one. It's based on your normal helipad agreement that you have with the entities that have an ongoing use of the helipad, but it, it's different in a few ways. Number one, it's only for a limited time and unlimited purpose. Number two, all coordination occurs through the borough itself. Number three, because there are already individuals that hold licenses, first priority goes to those entities that already hold licenses. The first, first priority is with Fanatics, who holds the primary and first license. There's also an indemnification for Fanatics because that's a requirement of the Fanatics license. There's a $150 fee, which is just an administrative fee to cover the coordination costs. And then there, there is also terms that requires them to defend the borough and indemnify the borough. And then we have a $5 million insurance requirement, which has never been an issue. These companies carry insurance well above $5 million. So this, again, is for discussion this evening. In reality, you are receiving these requests. So to protect the borough, this document would more formally provide for these one-time landings that include insurance and indemnification requirements to protect the borough. So I'll have to answer any questions you might have.
Can you tell me more about what kind of entities are making these requests?
I can't, but Ray may be, Ray may be able to. Are there, are there any current? Adrian's wondering what kind of entities are making the requests. I mean, it, it tends to be professional organizations, so.
Corporate helicopters out of New York City. And they're going to one of our, just so they're here, like, got seven helicopters, six helicopters.
So, so it's to make your, your facilities, your office buildings, for example, more accessible to those traveling and to also make those office buildings more attractive because they'll have better accessibility.
If they didn't use our helipad, what would be the next closest? And did we?
Northeast Philly.
Yep, yep.
So have, I'm sure we have, but done our due diligence on the fee to, you know, are we in range?
Yes, I mean, it was somewhat hard to find comparables. There's a few municipalities that have an actual helipad. So the comparables we have are actual airports.
Yeah.
But yes, we would say that the one-time fee covers the costs of what it would cost us to coordinate the landing. And it is aligned with numbers that we found, once you piece through a larger entity that's landing planes.
I think it's, I think it's a little higher maybe, but that's the actual, like, we base it on the actual cost, for example, of the, of the person that does it for Fanatics, just, just for example. So we based it on a real cost. And if it turns out that the borough's expenses are higher, the benefit of a one-time license fee is we can always change the, we can always change the fee for the next license.
So that's every time they land, it's $150?
Yep.
Not just $150 for a year?
No.
Every time they land. You're exactly right, yep.
And it'll be part of the borough's fee schedule, if approved.
Anyone else have any questions?
And that's all I have, President Leonard. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peters. There, is there anyone this evening for public comment? No one for public comment? I will, Mayor Arrington?
So we had our annual police shredding event over the weekend. I don't think I realized when we first started this, like, I knew there was the environmental aspect of being able to shred the documents and recycle them. But hanging out with Detective Walter every year, you sort of learn all this stuff. And there really is a security component to getting rid of these documents. So something that the police have brought back, for anyone that missed this event, is a collection bin at the department. So if any resident has documents they want to shred, they can just, just dump them in and it's safe and secure. And then there'll also be on October 28th, Representative Greg Scott and our state senator, Vince Hughes, are holding a much larger shredding event at Quaker. Vince Hughes are holding a much larger shredding event at Quaker in White Marsh, so residents can look forward to that. And then, speaking of Discover Conshohocken, one of our businesses had their first anniversary a couple of weeks ago. So we went in, and the shop is doing super well. They've opened up new rooms, and there's all kinds of fun stuff, community engagement, tarot readings, all kinds of cool stuff happening there. So congratulations to Lily and 13 Circles. And I was driving to a meeting, and I passed by the Park House, and I had to take a picture. So, so yeah, we are gearing up for Halloween, of course, but it's a good reminder that October 21st, is it 3 o'clock we're starting?
Three is registration.
Three is registration for our Halloween parade. So anyone interested? It's, it's just such a wonderful event all around Merrywood Park, and of course, it will be Thomas's first venture into a category, so we're excited for that.
You can't judge, you know.
I think you have me doing pets anyway.
Yes. Yes. I was just kidding.
And that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Stacy?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Kathleen? Adrian?
Also, on the 21st, is that right? Yep. On the 21st, on the 21st, prior to the Halloween event, the Environmental Advisory Council is having a West Side cleanup, and we will be meeting at the...
Washees.
Washees. Okay, at the Washees.
Ironhouse.
Yep, at, I believe, 10 a.m.?
Yes.
And so come out, help get to know some of the people and like initiatives that the EAC is spearheading, as well as pitch in a hand to help clean up your community.
Thank you, Adrian. Carrie?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
With that, I will say, meeting, uh... Can you do anything this evening? So I'm going to end with Go Phillies, meeting adjourned.
Thank you.